Say once again with your team. My team. Before... Your name and the name of your officers before we proceed. So you can... You see.
Thank you very much Chair. My name is Kell. Council Secretary for Petoke Town Council.
Then the rest. Format.
Morning Chair. I'm Neda Sagaram Farley, Director Finance, Petoke Town Council.
Morning Chair. Morning everyone. My name is Trula. I'm Officer Petoke Town.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Names are Matthews Chiwuwe. I'm the Assistant Director.
I'm...
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Ernest Matibini. Acting Internal Auditor for Petoke Town Council. Ernest Matibini.
Ernest Matibini.
Acting Internal Auditor.
Oh, thank you. We start from here.
Morning Chair. Morning Honorable Members.
You can pull the mic closer, yes.
Morning CS and your team. My name is Marshall Gabriel. Director from Eastern Provincial Audit Office. I've come with a team who are request to introduce themselves. Thank you.
Morning Chair.
Your mic. Endeavor to do that so that the people there can pick you.
Morning Honorable Members. Morning CS and your team. My name is Colin Zissam. The Assistant Director, Eastern Province.
Thank you Chair. Good morning everyone. My name is Simon.
We can have Mr. Finance.
Thank you so much Chair and good morning. Good morning Honorable Members. My name is Mes Malisawa, representing the Office of the Accountant General, Ministry of Finance. Thank you.
Good morning Chair, good morning Members. My name is Amsho Taveno, representing the Control, those of the Control of Internal Audits. Thank you.
Good morning Chair, good morning Honorable Members of the Committee. Petoke Town Council, you're welcome and good morning to you. My name is Joyce Kovanza, from Ministry of Local Government and Rural Development. Thank you.
Good morning Chair, good morning Members, good morning CS and your team. My name is Christopher Papa, Senior Human Resource Management Officer. Office.
Good morning Chair, good morning Honorable Members and good morning Petoke Town Council. My name is Max Ochilaka from the Office of the Clerk. Thank you.
Good morning every...
Thank you. Good morning Member. To all our permanent witnesses. Good morning Town Council. My name is Iman.
Thank you. Honorable Member from Mankmanggo. Good morning.
Good morning.
There, morning. Petoke Town Council, welcome to your committee. I am your own Honorable Dr. Aaron Moanza, Member of Parliament for Gombe constituency. I must welcome you to this declaration. You are for all the Zambians. Why do you say your own only to Petoke? Togo Morunda is in order. We can see where the people. Morning Honorable.
Chair, good morning and morning Petoke Town Council. I'm Mr. Head. Uh, in the local council, you're welcome to your committee, thank you Chair.
Thank you very much Honorable. I am... One of people of Wachasefu constituency in eastern province of this part of Zambia. And I'm privileged to chair this Honorable Committee of yours. Thank you very much for those introductions and with that said, CS I would like to ask you to take us through your memorandum.
Thank you very much Chair, thank you very much, um, Members. Chair, allow me before I read my report just to make a correction on page six. I'll draw them on the, on the first page where it says Petoke Town Council. Um, there are figures there under the cause of the query. The amount should read seventy... Eight million nine hundred and... Ten to page. On the action taken.
Um, Council Secretary. You seem to, you seem to be... Uh, too fast. If you can go back because Secretariat hasn't gotten the corrections.
Thank you very much.
Let's start over.
Okay. You can proceed. Thank you Chair.
Starting from where started.
Okay, thank you. I was requesting that I be allowed to make a correction on the first page of the report. The cost of query. Is seventy-eight million nine hundred and eight one thousand zero seventy-seven point one...
Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. And the last correction Chair is on page six. I draw attention to where it says action taken. The sentence should read, management wishes to submit that some of the activities were conducted in 2024 as shown in the table below. And the later at appendix C. Okay? So the table below and later at appendix C. Okay? And Chair, if those corrections have been made, we have, if the committee wish. Uh, like to submit that we have the original receipts which we have come with, which are accompanying the vouchers which are highlighted in the report. They are also being submitted as part of our evidence Chair.
That is okay.
And any other information which the Committee may wish to have will seek to provide. Chair, now allow me to go through the report.
Please go ahead.
Thank you Chair. On budget and income and expenditure, Chair, the cause of the query. Um, management acknowledges the observation of the auditor and wishes to report that at the time of the audit. The council had not yet received an approval for the adjustment of the budget from seventy-eight million nine hundred and eighty-one zero seventy-seven point one two. To seventy-six million eight hundred and ninety-nine point zero seventy-seven, comma zero point, zero seventy-seven point one two. Chair, the action taken. Upon observing that the council was not going to meet the set revenue target, management resolved to apply to the Ministry of Local Government and Rural Development. For evaluation from the initial revenue estimates. This was done after the matter had passed through the relevant committee and the council resolution was obtained. The Ministry of approved the application and the letter is available for verification. Chair, this is at appendix A. Chair, the remedial measure, management wishes to report that it will endeavor to collect all revenues and where factors hinder this from being achieved. Budget adjustments will be made earlier so that requisite adjustments to the budget are secured in time. On the next query Chair. I'll refer you to page four of the report. Which says management, cause of query. Management acknowledges the observation of the auditor and wishes to report that at the time of audit, council had not yet received an approval for the adjust, adjustment to the budget from seventy-eight...
This is the same query as the one that you just read. You can go to the next one.
Thank you Chair. The same one, okay. Chair, it's the same, even the, the third one is also the same query. So I'll go to page nine, which is a different query.
The, the one on page four.
Yes Chair.
That is good. Okay, let's go ahead.
Thank you Chair, on page nine. Uh, the cause of the query is management wishes to acknowledge the observation of the auditor. And wishes to submit that it had been difficult to source spare parts for the movable assets as they were either obsolete or not being made by the original manufacturer. Action taken Chair, management wishes to report that it has established an asset disposal committee in accordance with the Public Finance Management Act number one of 2018. And the council resolution has since been secured. Management is in the process of engaging the valuer to value the said assets in readiness for disposal in accordance with the said act. Chair, this is at appendix, uh, the documents I've referred to at appendix D. Remedial measure. Management undertakes to adhere to the provisions of the Public Finance Management Act number one of 2018 on the disposal of council assets. Chair, allow me to go to part B on cross cutting, uh, audit findings. On the cause of the query. Management wishes to acknowledge the observation of the auditor and wishes to submit that the unspent funds are committed funds on capital projects and operational expenses. Chair, action taken. Management wishes to report that a total of two million nine hundred and, two million and ninety-six thousand nine hundred and ninety-two quater has been spent as shown in the table below. Chair, there's a table which I have done and it's at appendix F together with the vouchers to show this expenditure. Remedial measures, management will endeavor to spend all monies within the financial year. Chair, the next query is on, of employment of staff which, uh, cause of the query, management acknowledges the observation of the auditor. And wishes to submit that the excess staff fall under the mandate of the Local Government Service Commission. And the process of realigning staff after the approval of the new structure has since commenced. Uh, action taken, management wishes to report that staff returns with excess staff who are sent to the Local Government Service Commission informing them about the excess positions. Uh, meanwhile, the Human Resource Management Committee has initiated the process of realigning positions based on the newly approved structure for the town council. Chair, this is at appendix G. Remedial measure, Chair, management will endeavor to notify the Local Government Service Commission on excess staff, staffing for redirection and realignment. Chair, uh, the next one is a cause of, the cause of query is management wishes to acknowledge the observation...
Can you read the, the query?
Okay, thank you Chair. The query is failure to fill vacant positions. At appendix sixteen. Management wishes to acknowledge the observation of the auditor and wishes to state that it had not received a response on the filling of critical vacant positions from the Local Government Service Commission at the time of audit. Action taken. Management wishes to report that a recommendation was submitted to the Local Government Service Commission to fill the position of internal auditor. The position of internal auditor has been successfully filled as evidenced by the attached letter of acting appointment which is available for verification. It's at appendix H Chair. Remedial measure, management will continuously engage the Local Government Service Commission to ensure that critical vacant positions are filled to ensure effective and efficient delivery of services. Chair, the next query is failure to provide white books for movable assets. The cause of query Chair. Management acknowledges the observation of the auditor and wishes to submit that motor vehicles were received from contractors and donors through the Ministry of Local Government and Rural Development. As project vehicles. Change of ownership had not commenced at the time of audit. Uh, action taken. Management wishes to report that letters have since been written to contractors so that the process of change of ownership can commence. These letters at appendix I, Chair. Remedial measures. Management undertakes to ensure that deeds of gifts are prepared with the contractors so that project vehicles are duly registered in the name of the council upon completion of donor funded, uh, projects. Chair, the next query is a failure to secure properties with title deeds. The cause of the query. Management acknowledges the observation of the auditor and wishes to submit that the process of acquiring title deeds for council properties commenced. Unfortunately, none of the title deeds was ready for collection at the time of audit. Action taken, manage, management wishes to report that council paid for production of survey diagrams to the Office of the Surveyor General. Engagements with the Ministry of Lands have been ongoing Chair. Uh, remedial measures, management will ensure that title deeds for all the properties are secured. Chair, the next query is failure to maintain council properties. And the cause of the query. Management acknowledges the observation of the auditor and wishes to submit that an availability of adequate water at the market due to increased load shedding at the time of audit resulted in challenges of maintaining the absorption block. The water pumping mechanism at the market was solely dependent on the ZESCO grid. The drums were used to store water which was sourced from other water points which were powered using solar or generators. Uh, action taken, management wishes to report. That the main market absorption blocks were rehabilitated and proper maintenance has since been instituted. The activity report for the completed works and pictures of the works done are available for verification Chair. Uh, remedial measure, council will endeavor to maintain the, their properties in good state. Uh, poor management of waste as the next query Chair. The cause of query, management wishes to acknowledge the observation of the auditor and wishes to report that the council had not yet shifted the dump site to the newly secured area. Action taken, management wishes to report that the council has secured a new dump site. This process has reached an advanced stage in that ZEMA has approved the environmental project brief which is available for verification. Uh, further Chair, the council, under the World Bank funding, under the Zambia Devolution Support Program, has budgeted for an engineer dump site in the 2025 budget. Chair, this is attached as appendix K. Remedial measure, management will ensure that an engineer dump site is constructed to protect the public and the environment. Chair, query twenty-eight on failure to settle statutory and other obligations. The cause of the query, management wishes to acknowledge the observation of the auditor. And wishes to submit that failure to remit statutory obligations was due to deficit on the Local Government Quarantine Fund as it did not meet the payment of salaries and wages and gross. The action taken, management has reached an advanced stage in the renovations of its commercial venture Inika Motel with a view to expand its revenue base. Ledgers and pictures of how far we've gone with these repairs Chair have been attached for verification. Remedial measures, management will adhere to requirement. Obligations. Uh, the last query is a failure to settle staff obligations. Uh, Chair, management wishes to acknowledge the observation of the auditor and wishes to report that the failure to clear staff obligations was due to the deficit in Local Government Quarantine Fund. As most funds were collected were dedicated to payment of salaries and wages. Chair, management has started the same renovations of the Inika Motel with a view to expand its revenue base. Chair, the remedial measure is that management will ensure the staff obligations are paid on time. Thank you Chair, submit the report.
Thank you so much, uh, Council Secretary. And I wish to invite the Members for points of clarifications, if any, Honorable Money.
Thank you so much Chair, um, CS I'd like to take it to page nine.
Page nine?
Yes, Chair. Failure to maintain or service mobile, I mean movable assets. Chair, I can see a sunny grader here. How old is this, uh, grader? And have you been to Sunny? The supplier which is just here by airport road and they have confirmed with you that they have got no spare parts for their equipment? I submit Chair.
Thank you so much, yes, CS?
Uh, thank you very much Chair. Uh, this grader was procured by the council in 2013 and it broke down some time back. And Chair, uh, we did an evaluation in trying to find out how much it was going to cost to put this grader back on the road. Chair, after the assessment, the cost of bringing this grader back to the road was quite high. It was almost reaching one million quater. And Chair, we approached the CDF, uh, uh, Committee. Who I think made a decision on this one Chair. And the decision which they have made is that the funds which had been earmarked to repair this grader be used as a top up to procure another grader. And funding has been provided in the 2025 budget and the approval has since been secured. So Chair, the solution to this one is that we are going to buy a new grader, uh, topping up with funds from 2025. While the money which was supposed to be earmarked for these repairs will also go to procurement of this same equipment to be used in the constituents. I submit Chair.
Thank you so much. Uh, we seem to be struggling with our coram. And in line with our standing orders, I will suspend business for fifteen minutes to see if we can have a coram. After which we can continue. Secretariat, help us to locate some Members to join us. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, you still working for the division. And under consideration is the Committee on Local Government Accounts which is considering the report over the Auditor General on the audit over the... Year ended at the first of December, 2023. Committee has gone on a five minutes, uh, fifteen minutes break because there is no coram and as soon as the coram is constituted. Continue receiving... At your parliamentary division, the station that brings parliament across at you. Good morning.
My eParliament mobile application. First, download the app on either Play Store or App Store and install. After installation, open the app. Step one, register your personal information. That's your names, gender, ethnicity and date of birth. Step two, add your contact information, your email, phone number and home address. Step three, select your constituency. Step four, create your four digit PIN. At this point, the system will send an SMS to your mobile number with a one-time passcode. Step five, confirm with one-time passcode that are sent to your mobile. Step six, sign in using your phone number and the four digit PIN. And step seven, create your submission and submit. My eParliament, bringing parliament closer to you.
Allow me Chair to call upon Director Works, Director Works on the exact amount.
Director Works, can you help your committee?
Thank you Chair, so the supplier Sunny was engaged to, they came physically unexpected and they gave us a, assessment report and the quotation. So the quotation was coming to about nine hundred and eighty thousand to do the actual repair works.
Vice Chair.
Thank you Chair. Um, CS, you have this query before this committee and from Auditor General. That is speaking to lack of servicing your movable assets. How do you expect this committee to believe you? That you actually made a decision because of this, eh, report, assessment report? That you have not provided here? For us to believe, to say this is the reason why a decision was made because of, you know, the comparison of cost of getting a new one and, and the servicing. We are looking, when did the, the grader breakdown?
When did the grader breakdown and why haven't you shared that important information? To help your committee establish what is, why you can't repair it?
Chair, I can call upon the Director Finance on the time the grader broke down.
DF?
Yes, we last used the grader in 2020.
Twenty twenty, this is 2025. Now, the question is, you have said that, um. Uh, you've considered buying a new one than repairing this one?
When the assessment was done, those were just preliminary assessments, which were done by the manufacturer, that is what the cost came to. There was intimation that the cost could be higher, depending on what they were going to find in the engine, hence the decision. I submit, Chair.
CS, you may confuse this committee further. I think the best word is you're confusing yourself. You are not an expert. You got these experts to come and assess, thorough assessment of your machinery, which has only worked for five, last worked in 2020. Now, they came to give you a report and the cost of the same repairs. You question to the committee, and the committee said whatever they recommended. Now, you are even scaring us, because you want to legitimize your position of buying a machine at 3.4 million. I will not be shy to give you one example if you are in local government, find out from your friends in Chongwei. Chongwei bought a new machine, they also repaired the old one at a higher cost than what you are doing. Why? They are serious in service provision. No council can be comfortable with one machine. So what the honourable members of this committee is asking, why have you neglected to use part of the CDF to repair even this machinery? Why don't you consider to buy other machines? Machines? So, CS, you cannot throw away a machine that was bought at a higher cost because you have acquired a new one. Even the new one can even, it will break down. What are you going to do? So we are talking about servicing of movable assets. Are you going to be throwing away? Do you have that money? So why did you neglect, or are you neglecting to repair this one at 900,000, so that it can continue? The value for this machine is more than 900. Honorable Mangango then the Vice Chair, then Kaumbwe.
Thank you so much, Chair. I think the CS is trying to confuse himself. You go to appendix nine, I mean appendix D. Appendix D there. The last leaf, just before appendix E. You have attached to your evidence nicely, okay, of the meeting, so the CDF meeting that was held on Saturday 30th of November 2024, at 11 hours to 18:44. So now, this, on the last leaf, Chair, if I can read point number three, it says, "To repair the grader, the authorized dealer Delta Auto was invited to come and assess the equipment. It was reported that the preliminary assessment reviewed the cost about 900,000 kuajia to make the grader operational." So, just as the Chair has asked, I don't know whether, according to you, when you procure an asset, the moment it gives you a problem, the crash is not working, whatever, then you throw it away and opt to buy another one. I don't know whether that is the route that Petahoke Town Council wants to take. And then how many assets are you going to have to be keeping at your council like that? And Chair, this grader was not, did not stop operating in 2013?
2020.
Sorry?
They said 2020.
Yes, it was 2020, and they just left it like that, without working on it, neglected to work on it up to date. And you can see the wear and tear as a result of the negligence by the council. And as it was evaluated at that particular time, Chair, if you were to evaluate it again today, you find that the wear and tear will have done what? The depreciation would have increased? Because it is not operational. So, CS, do not start misguiding yourself, saying, "No, it is more than that, no, it was like this, no." No, according to a professional assessment by Delta Auto, it was assessed that it will cost 900,000 kuajia. So, will you keep on buying a lot of graders? If you, like, for example, you were just to procure the CDF vehicle, so when the tire busts, you keep it? You say, "No, this vehicle, the tire has busted, so we will not work on it, we have to buy another one." CS, I think this is the route that we cannot allow our councils to take, because it is more expensive as a result of their negligence, Chair. The negligence of councils over assets is high. There are issues that they prioritize, as opposed to prioritizing national assets, which cannot be allowed. Chair, you can confirm with me that even when they buy, as you have said, even when they buy a new asset, a new grader, it will again break down. I know we have an issue, for example, in Kaluushis, it's almost the same story, just after being, but never even worked. They just looked at it, and it was just like that, and it has been like that up to now. So this kind of negligence, Chair, I think councils from here, you are supposed to take it that way. It's your mandate and your responsibility to look after national assets. There's no one that will be coming with chunks of money, donors, to come and give it, say, "No, when it stops working, use this money." You have to generate your revenue, and you buy an asset, you have to know how to maintain it, and so that it can work for, for the people, so that it can work for you, work for the people. That's the essence of the government procuring these assets.
Thank you very much, Honorable. Before the Vice Chair comes in, my question is, the new one, have you already procured? CS?
Thank you, Chair. The process of procuring has commenced, and it's running on EGP at the moment.
Do you have a grader in Petahoke before you are considering to procure a moving grader, a runner?
No, Chair.
So, the NES CDF started in 2022. For Petahoke Council, it was not a priority to set 900,000 aside to repair the grader. 2023, it is not a priority. 2024, that's when, I don't know if you are located in 2024. So the grader was not an issue, to provide a service for the people of Petahoke. All these years you are receiving NES CDF. You, as technical cars, could not recommend for a procurement or repair of the same old grader at 900,000, whilst you are considering to buy a new one. I've given you an example of Chongwei. That example can give you, the time I took over Petahoke, I mean Chasifu, my graders have been repaired, our graders have been repaired two, three times. Hydraulic brakes, what break down, we repair. The director administration there just come from Chasifu, he can attest. Why have you neglected this? That's where the question is. It's not a priority for you, and the people are lamenting about poor road network, poor services. CS, what is your technical team? How is it advising the council at Petahoke? Then the vice will come in with this question.
Thank you, Chair. Chair, the issue of procuring a new grader has been presented to both CDF committees previously, that for Kaumbwe and that one for Petahoke Central. So Chair, the issue has been brought to their attention, and it is now that we had really emphasized to say, "We need earth-moving equipment." Government has allocated 3.2 million to procurement of fuels, so we asked to say, "Where are these fuels going to be used if we do not have earth-moving equipment?" Hence, Chair, the emphasis, I submit.
So you had to wait for the president. Had the president not emphasized on allocating money for fuels, Petahoke would not have bought a grader. What do you think is the reasoning behind not opening roads? Because the council is created to provide services, and one of the services is road network, water, reticulation, refuse or maybe equate, damage collection or refuse collection, cleansing, oil cleaning of the streets and what? Oh, that is a function of the local authority. So roads are not, were not, until the president, they said, "No, each council provides 3 million." "Oh, they have provided 3 million now, that's when we can buy a grader." Is that what you are telling me, that the people, the council in Kaumbwe and Petahoke were looking at? Vice Chair, pick it up.
Thank you so much, Chair. I really want to get the motivation behind this decision and the opportunity cost, you know, that led to this decision. You earlier alluded to the fact that the supplier said it may cost more in the assessment report. That advice in the assessment report, it's on page what of the assessment report? And secondly, CDF Committee gave you monies, 1.1, to fix this grader. Why did you neglect to utilize these funds to fix this grader, which would be cheaper to run and maintain than procuring a new one? Because even a new grader will still break down, it will need repairs, it will need servicing, the cost that you are trying to run away from. And from my assessment here, the members, we have this earth-moving machine. If you don't take this machinery for service for a long time, it will give you problem. So this is why I want to understand, because I have this same equipment, bought from the same supplier. I thank you, Chair.
No, let him respond, then you'll come in, Kaumbwe will come in, not Kaumbwe, Dr. Mazo will come in, then yourself. CS, can you give us a set light on what has been said before, even the Vice Chair?
Thank you very much, Honorable Shakafoza, for that question. I'll take you to the same appendices, which the honourable member was reading. Chair, on point two, there's the 1,149,678,7, which was allocated via that minute number for repair of the grader from 2023 and 2024. Majed allocation be varied to go towards the procurement of a brand-new grader. So Chair, in 2023, the CGFC had allocated about 580,000 kuajia for the grading of roads, okay? And then, in the 2024, they had allocated 600.
Using which grader?
They did not provide a grader to use in this, that was just funds to be used for repair of roads, grading of roads, okay? And at that time, the grader was already down. In 2024, they allocated 634 for still grading of the roads. That is when we said we have got a grader.
Sorry for the Vice Chair.
CS, can you read the same information you are referring to? Point number two, read what it says, whether it says grading of the road or repairing of the grader.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to give a background.
You see, we stick to what is in there.
I've asked you a simple question. You had monies allocated for the fixing of the grader, which evidence you have given before this committee? Can you read what you are presenting before this committee?
The 1,149,678 kuajia, 7, which was allocated via minute PTC KCDFC 60824, for the repair of the grader from 2023 and 2024. Majed allocation be varied to go towards the procurement of a brand-new grader. Now, you just gave this committee a report, verbal report, how you were allocating monies for grading of a grader, or for grading of the roads, or working on the roads without a grader. When you had a grader that was parked, CS, we are testing the morality behind the decisions that you make as officers. I'll tell you one thing, CS, these councils are not just in those statuses, it takes the officers. I'll give you an example, I've seen a report, one of the reports I'll come to. When you talk about renovations at Nika motel, wanting to diversify or maybe to broaden the revenue base, there are people there at Petahoke who were running that Petahoke better than now. So you have money under CDF, government has given you, can you do these things? You allocate monies to do the roads, can you find out how much, how you use that money? When you didn't have a grader, you have a grader that can be repaired. Your role as technical cars is to advise, and your role as technical cars is to toe the policy of government. The government said procure graders, everyone procured, repair graders, some people are repairing. I've given you example of Chongwei, which I know. Immediately, CDF was in haste, they went to the old grader that was parked, it is moving, they have bought a new one. That is leadership. So, this issue of the grader, we have talked about it since we started, I think it points to the fact that you have not been on top of things advising these committees, advising us to do the correct things for the good of the people. People are still using tomorrow's twangol or pujar trucks when the machinery is parked? It's another question.
Maybe the last one, Chair.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Is it on the same?
It's a summary question, yes. I want just to find out.
I want to give chance to Honorable Kaumbwe, before you come. Honorable member, you are declaring interest?
Yes, he has declared interest. Chair, I just want to find out, this grader is repairable, where do you want to take it? After you have procured a new grader, you all capitalize on using the new grader, where do you want to take this one? You want to sell it, at how much, or you want to give it away, or you want to keep it rotting, just keep rotting like you have kept it? Where do you want to take it? I submit, Chair.
A simple, short one. You can respond, CS?
Chair, the decision of the committee was that it should be sold off. The decision of the committee was that it should be sold off, Chair. I submit.
And you are aware, you advised them that the best decision is to sell off. Then the other one, which you are buying, this machinery, they break easily, then you breaks yourself off, to who? When you can spend 900,000 kuajia? And at how much do you want to sell it?
Chair, we are here to engage the services of a valuer, who is going to value it?
Thank you.
Is it on the same?
It's a summary question, yes. I want just to find out.
I want to give chance to Honorable Kaumbwe before you come. Honorable member, you are declaring interest?
Yes, he has declared interest.
Chair, I just want to find out, this grader is repairable, where do you want to take it? After you have procured a new grader, you capitalize on using the new grader. Where do you want to take this one? You want to sell it at how much or you want to give it away? Or you want to keep it rotting, just keep rotting like you have kept it? Where do you want to take it? I submit. A simple, short one. You can respond, CS.
Chair, the decision of the committee was that it should be sold off. The decision of the committee was that it should be sold off Chair, I submit.
And you are aware, you advised them that the best decision is to sell off. Then the other one which you are buying, this machinery, they break easily. Then you breaks yourself off, to who? When you can spend 900,000 kwacha? And at how much do you want to sell it?
Chair, we are here to again the services of a valuer, who is going to value it?
There's suspicion that maybe there are people who have interest to get it at cheaper price. Do you think you are going to recoup? I asked you earlier CS, the value of this grader, the value to the community and 900,000 kwacha. On this issue, Honorable members, I think we have labored. We start feeling that there is something wrong at Petahoke Council. If you take any class, can advise to sell off a machinery, your other councils are repairing this machinery and they direct you visit. Let us provide services, the people of Zambia, they want to see the value of the monies that we are receiving under CDF. We cannot continue talking about this CDF if people don't see the keeping machinery like. And they put. Another one is ending, you get a new. People want to see that grader repaired, it is working alongside the new one. With the bulldozers that constitutes, even the new one easily break. Equipment, you don't have bulldozers. To the rural constituencies so that they can change. The people of these rural constituencies, they want passable roads. Anyway, we can only advise. This was not a rational one if I was a. People, you are. To each other, you know what, learning from others does not make you not to be a good council. Some of us were able to track, I can tell you all. The good council, they pay. But you take other. In one distance. 2 million. You can do a lot within a short period of time. Sign the Kaumbwe. Petahoke is not developed. Scabaging, garbage, I don't accuse those CDF committee members. If you manage you officers. It was not a rational decision, 900,000 could have secured. Coal skulls from jungle, the town. Talk, planner. Would you repair that one? Money is there under CDF. The man said, it breaks yourself, it breaks yourself. Well to the people. Have you spoken, do you wish to say anything? In 2020. But when I look at the G S. This was an overstatement at the resource envelope. So this road, 10 kilometers. Kilometers? Grader is not operation. What evidence? Will be contracted. That's a good one, thank you. You have passed CS.
Can I call upon Director of Engineering?
Thank you Chair. The grader to perform. No, we just hired the grader.
From no one, it was founded. You heard from. You said you are going to do 200 kilometers and the money that was there. Then from the money that you. Petahoke are listening. The people of Kaumbwe are listening, they want to know the 10 kilometers out of the 200 that you estimated and who did the estimates? Director of Engineering.
So they. They cancel.
Who among yourselves, which technical person did that?
So the estimate was done under my office.
It was done under your office. Kilometers.
So the grader were hiring that 8,000 kwacha.
That you are going to do 200 kilometers, at how much director finance? Director finance, you are the money person. No, you.
Here the target says 2.6 million.
Yeah. This council, can this council state clearly where? Remember, you know Petahoke, you are under capital, eh? Where you are not allowed to mislead your committee? If you happen to. Hire a grader and if. Don't even know which. Is that? This was due to a statement in the budget looking at the resource envelope. Budgeted how much you are supposed to state? We had budgeted so much, we did carry 10 kilometers at so much. Contractor was Shaka Fosa, or Honorable Mutero. Chair, I'm just giving you. That is. CS, you can.
Thank you Chair. So in the 2023 budget, there was general operations, their budgeted amount was 250.
The fingertips. Supposed to say toward the roads, on this, toward the roads we are de-estimated to do 200 kilometers at this. We only. Progress, we ask. Page 11. Amounts up 9,312. Is 55,000 kwacha above. How do we explain this situation?
I'll call upon the Director of Finance Chair.
DF. It's appendix what? Just believe you, that was the variation. CS, I want your committee to accept that statement. Is this the standard? That you want to vary, you just sit, just start spending?
No Chair, it is not.
What are you supposed to do?
Chair for doing that. The works which have been varied. After that. Project has to go to.
Have you done that on this project?
Yes Chair, that has been. At the moment Chair.
So what do you want this committee to believe? If we need to take that route, we are not going to be spending taxpayers' money. We are going to phone you. Why do you think we are constituted as a committee? For how long have you been a council servant?
15 months Chair.
For how long have you been a DF?
12 years sir.
Huh?
12 years.
12 years a DF. And you are one of the longest-serving DF at one council in Petahoke. Right or wrong?
Right.
Then you don't know the procedure. How do you help this committee in Petahoke? What do you basically want us to be report, verb or? Malango. My Chair, I think Petahoke not to have answers for your committee. They were not ready, did you sit and just go through what you are coming to present before your committee? Because I'm seeing some disorganization in the way you are responding. You don't seem to have best answers. It's like what DF know? The CS or DF doesn't know, what the planner knows, the director HR doesn't know. That's the way I'm. It's miscoordinated. On the same page, page 11, I'm seeing Nyeka Motel Rehabilitation and so. I just would like to find out. Here is the contract that you signed about the rehabilitation. One, question number one, please CS take note so that you can give answers to your committee. Where is the contract that you signed with the contractor to rehabilitate Nyeka Motel? Two, what is the status of the Motel right now? And three, why have you dragged or why paid to be completed on Nyeka Hotel or Motel? Before they come to that, they should ask first what is the status? Respond quickly before allow Honorable Mutero to come in.
I submit Chair.
Thank you Chair, from the status, we are just remaining with putting the.
You can start.
Thank you.
We don't take pleasure to send people away. But you are tilting towards that door. You are moving towards that. What, how do we accept everything is not there? We don't want to be speculating. We want to be talking to you, we are looking at, this is what you did. You budgeted for two hundred kilometers. Then again, inform. Which contractor? We're supposed to look at that. CS, you are not helping your committee. You found them, you are new. But we have got people are there. DF was there. The other internal auditor? This internal auditor procurement, you have been there for some time. From Nika, Chair. Where is? Since it has gone to, to. But, yeah, so our plan or if maybe. Provide all this information because we have this information. Uh, we cannot. Need to give the. Full information. We don't want to sound unfair. We want to make progress. You can come with a detailed program. Particular council. With that said, please, thank you so much for your appearance. As you go back, wish you well. We shall give you a date when to appear. Thank you.